I want to make sure everybody was here. I'll call the meeting to order and ask Liz to do a roll call.
Mayor, Mayor Dickey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Charnow?
Here.
Councilmember Tolles?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Magazine?
Here.
Councilmember LaCron?
Present.
Councilmember Spelitch?
Present.
Great.
Thank you, everyone. Grady's going to say a few words about what we're going to be doing here, and then, of course, David Pock is going to be giving the presentation. And I just wanted to remind you to moot, mute, mute your phone, and we'll get started. Grady?
Yes, thank you. And I just want to remind the council members that we have divided the presentation into multiple sections, and at the end of each section, the mayor will be calling you, I believe, in seating order, correct Jenny?
Yeah, I'll do one way, then the other, then vice versa.
Okay. And the idea is, is that if we don't do it that way, with everybody being on the telephone, it's going to be a little chaotic. So that way, we'll have a little bit more order to the meeting, and it'll give everybody a chance to chime in on any questions or comments that they may have in that fashion. So if the mayor and council are ready, I'll go ahead with my introductory remarks before I turn it over to our finance director.
That's good.
Okay. Well, mayor and council, as you're aware, one of the most important functions of a city or town is the adoption of the annual budget. The annual budget sets forth the spending plan and outlines the council priorities for the year ahead. The proposed budget before you is based on revenue estimates as latest March, which also included estimates of state shared revenue for next year and the latest revenue trends. The staff and I are acutely aware that the pandemic situation will have impacts on the region and the town's revenue base, particularly sales tax. Our challenge going forward is that statutorily, the town of Fountain Hills must adopt its tentative budget in May and adopt its final budget in June. I want to let the council know that while what you have before you is based on several months' work, we are prepared to take a number of actions to address the situation during and after the adoption of the budget. This includes continuing to monitor sales tax and state shared revenues, make sure that they're tracking, or if they're not, then to change course. We're also planning on having a quarterly budget update with the town council to share how we're tracking and if we need to make any adjustments to work with you on those. We also are looking at putting into place a hiring freeze. Now, this would be only in a worst-case scenario, and if things don't really get back to normal, that we're hoping it will, but we're also anticipating the worst in the situation. We've also programmed a cost of living adjustment that was put in for January. And again, when we put it in originally, it was for July before the pandemic hit. The idea is, is that if the revenues are not tracking, this money's programmed in the budget, we will not go forth with a, with implementing that. So that money will just sit there and will not go forward. We've also, we will also be asking department directors to identify potential cuts in their budgets next year if the revenue situation is not tracking to what we were planning on. And this way, it will make it a lot easier for us because the following year, the state shared revenues, for the most part, are current year's revenues, except for income tax, which is always the year before. So if income tax collections are down this year, which they probably will be, but not too bad because, you know, the pandemic really started hitting pretty hard in March, and a lot of people might have already, early filers might have already taken advantage of filing. Because of the situation with the pandemic, I was curious how we fared back to the worst of the Great Recession. I asked David to go back and look at how we did as a town back then. And some of you have been around, were around at that time in town, and was aware that there were a lot of cuts that the town had made. But he looked, and the worst case we had was a 30% reduction over a two-year period of time on the sales tax. And I think, based on what you're going to hear today, we feel a little bit more confident we might be able to weather this a little bit. Again, we'll make, obviously, adjustments and do what we need to do. But we, we think that that's going to be, it's going to be bad, but it may not be as bad as, as it may possibly be. The other comments, I want to just let the council know, is that the town has always been good stewards of taxpayer dollars and has traditionally not expended every dollar budgeted. We also are very conservative in our revenue estimates and do not forecast revenues that the town isn't certain to receive. And I'll give you examples. We know, for instance, and this is going back before the pandemic, we knew before that Copperwind was going to be opening up later this fall, going from a 35-room to 160-room hotel. We know that the bed tax will be significant, but we did not program that in, not knowing, without any history, what that might be. So as an example where we go ahead and, and plan on, you know, being a little bit more conservative in our estimates, we also didn't plan on the, let's see, what are my notes We had originally planned-
Grady, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
Live streaming on the computer doesn't seem to be working. It is on the TV, but not, at least not what I can see. Is it working for others?
Well, we haven't gone through any slides, Jean, Jenny.
Oh, I know, but, I mean, you're on TV, but you're not on the computer.
Okay, good. Thank you for bringing that up. I, we'll find out what's going on. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention, Jenny. So at this point in time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to the finance director, David Pock, who has a prepared presentation. And just to let you know, this is the presentation that he emailed off to the council last Thursday, correct David?
Yes.
Okay. And we're going to reference page numbers so everybody can be on the same page. With this being telephonic, it's going to be a little bit challenging as it is.
All right. Good evening, mayor, council members. You should have received the slides in an email from me, like Grady had mentioned, on Thursday. Slide numbers can be found in the lower right-hand corner, and then it will also be on screen as well, as we go through this. So the first section that we're going to go over is the year-end revenue expenditure and fund balance estimates. You had a preview of these during budget retreat in February, and a few things have changed since then. But, so the first slide is going over the operating fund revenues. These are a majority, make up a majority of our revenues, the local sales tax and the state shared revenues. That first section on the left-hand side of the slide, local sales tax, we're actually, oh, let me explain a little bit. In each series, the bar to the far left is last year's actual amounts. The bar in the middle of each series is the first four, or, sorry, the first eight months of actuals for this fiscal year, and then also my four-month projection for the rest of the year. And then the right-hand bar is what we budgeted at this time last year for the current fiscal year. So for the TPT sales tax, that local sales tax series, just so that you know, these sales tax collection amounts actually lag about two months. So we just received the final numbers for February, just last week. Tax filers are required to file their returns the month following the activity, and then it usually takes a couple weeks for DOR to get us final numbers. So as far as February, the latest month, as you know, this current event didn't start until the beginning of March. So February numbers actually came in, in line with our projections for the budget and in line with last year's revenues. So currently, the way it stands, we collected 9.2 million last year. The projection is to collect 9.5 million this year, and we had budgeted to receive 9.1. The reason for the big difference there, like Grady had mentioned, is that we do budget conservatively with revenues, and we had that three-tenths of a percent rate increase that took effect in November, and that increase was not included in the budget for this current year. So then, as far as state shared revenues, we had budgeted to receive 6.2 million. Last year, we received 5.5, and my estimate is that we'll, we'll end up receiving about 5.9. So as far as those two, those make up almost 90% of the total town revenues. And what I did for these last four months, as Grady had mentioned, went back and looked at the recession in 2008, 2009, looked at the effect on the TPT, and there was a 30% decrease. So just for these last four months of TPT collections and sales tax, or, sorry, state shared revenues, I took 30% off what my projections originally were. So those numbers, obviously, can change, and hopefully, they do come in a lot better than what I'm projecting here. As Grady had mentioned, too, as far as state shared revenues, the state shared sales tax, the vehicle license tax, and the HERF revenues are all real-time, based on real-time sales. The income tax does lag by two years. So the collections that we're receiving this year were actually for calendar year 2018 returns that were collected by the state in 2019. Going forward, as far as permits licensing, we're a little bit below what our budgeted number was. Should end up the year with about 900,000. The budgeted amount was 1.2 million. Fines and fees is right on target at about 500,000, budget and actual. And then the other, we're actually, the other category, we're actually ahead. That other category includes such things as investment earnings. So we have a total operating fund revenue of 17.6 million dollars. The next slide, Slide 4, is the operating fund expenditure projections. Same thing. Far left is last year's actuals, middle columns, the forecasted actuals for, for the remainder of this year, and then the far right is the budget. There are two departments that aren't on this chart, and that would be mayor and council and the courts. Together, those two, we should have about 445,000 in expenditures for this year, which is about 55,000 less than what we had budgeted. As far as everything that is here, you can see we have 16.7 million forecasted for the entire year, which leaves us $900,000. If all goes well, $900,000 will go towards fund balance. As far as the different departments, administrations, right on budget at 2 million each. I'm going to skip over general government real quick because we've got some, some other considerations to talk about. Looking at public works, we had budgeted 1.4, and it looks like we're going to come in at 1.2. Development services was budgeted for 1.1 million, and that's going to come in just around 850,000. Community services was budgeted for 2.8, and it looks like we're going to be at 2.4 million for the year. Fire and emergency medical is going to be right on budget at 4 million. And same with law enforcement, right on budget at 4.8. So now, if we go back to the general government, this one department is basically used to fund items that are kind of a town-wide expense. The reason I wanted to call it out is that this is where the general fund contingency is held. So last year, in last year's budget, there was about 450,000 in contingency that was included in the budget. We've got a lot more for this coming year, and we'll talk about that in later slides. So-
So we're on Slide 5 now?
Yes.
Excuse me, can I ask a question, Alan? Are you seeing this on Channel 11?
Can we? Is it showing on Channel 11?
It was showing, but it's way behind. It's better to watch it on the-
It's-
Well, I watch it on the computer. I don't have it on the computer.
There's a two-minute delay on TV.
There, there's a two-minute delay on Cox 11. That's why we didn't recommend it to the council.
But Jenny said watch it on, on the computer.
It streams live.
Computer is, is almost at the right time, but the TV is too slow. Or you could just look at the packets that we got in the mail, the hard copy. Those are exactly the same thing.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So Slide 5 is the estimated year-end TP, TPT collections for all funds. So this would be all of the excise tax funds, the economic development downtown strategy. Some of the money goes towards the pavement management program, some goes towards CIP, and then, as well as the general fund. So this is TPT that goes, the entire TPT collections received by the town. We're going to be on this slide for just a little while, but I wanted to explain, I did some, some further research as far as this goes. The wholesale and retail portion that you can see there in the middle of this slide, that's basically 51% of our, our revenues are received through the wholesale retail category. Construction is around 14% this year. The transportation, utility, and communications makes up 11%. And then restaurant, bar, insurance, real estate, and services are all 8% each. So as far as this year goes, as of the end of March, which is the last collections that we have, those are collections for February, we had actually received, already received 87% of the budgeted TPT for the year. So we were in really good shape. We need an additional 1.4 million over this last quarter to hit our budget number. Like I said before, projections took off 30% across the top on all categories for the last three months. I do expect to see a spike in our April collections, however, because that was before the stay-at-home order was going into place, people were stocking up and preparing. So there should be a spike in our March activity, which we'll be receiving this month. But then there's going to be a dip, obviously, in May for April because we're under the stay-at-home. June collections are, are going to be the key to seeing how this goes, and that's assuming that the stay-at-home order ends May 1st, that it's not extended. We'll be able to see exactly how the, you know, this is going to turn out, what kind of effect that this is going to have going forward. There will be, I'm assuming, decreased restaurant, bar-type activity, just because there's going to be, you know, limits placed on number of tables and that sort of thing. But we'll, we'll have to wait and see. So as far as collections so far, what I'm projecting for this year, we should have about 1.6 million in the construction category, 1.3 in the transportation, utility, and communications, 5.9 in the retail, and then just around 850,000 for each of those last categories. And then just to put a little context around why I'm holding out hope that this current situation isn't going to have extremely dire effects on us. I did go back and look at our TPT tax filers for last year. So over the entire year, there was just over 68, sorry, 6,800 tax filers. So those would be individuals, companies either in town or in, located outside of town that do business or have activity in Fountain Hills. So out of those 6,800 tax filers, we receive 50%, at least 50% of our collections from 53 of those. So that's less than 1% of the tax filers contribute 50% of our revenue. I can't go into specifics as far as which retailers those are. Needless to say, many of them are still open and still conducting business, so I think that bodes well for us. So now, that gets into where we are as far as fund balance. So on Slide 6, as we looked at during the retreat, I broke these down by classifications. The first is the restricted fund balance, and these are funds that we can only use for specific purposes. So the most common is the HERF fund or Streets Fund that's funded by HERF. That ending fund balance for the year should be 1.3. And then we've got our debt service funds. The general obligation debt service fund and the MPC debt service fund will be making their final debt payments July 1st. So these amounts already are after that payment's been made, because we usually send those out in mid-June. Eagle Mountain has this year's payment plus two more payments next year, and then all of their debt will be retired. Cottonwood Maintenance District, that shows their reserves as well as funds that have been collected for their maintenance. Park development fee and the fire and EMS development fee are there at just about 1.1 million. So total restricted, just under $3 million. The next classification is committed. These are on Slide 7. This is where the rainy day fund is. Just wanted to point out, as far as the rainy day fund, it's set per town policy by the council to maintain 20% of the average annual general fund revenues. And so right now, that, according to last year's calculations, that's just over 3.2 million. That fund can be used in the case of an emergency. However, you can only use half of it. So if we needed to use this fund, we'd only be able to use 1.6 million of it this year. And then that 1.6 million has to be repaid within five years. Then there's the capital projects fund, self-explanatory. Everybody's well aware what it's used for, for major projects that are approved by council. The town, downtown strategy fund and the economic development fund are both excise tax funds. So that actually gets funded by one-tenth of 1% of the TPT that's collected. Then the tourism fund, that's mainly funded by grants and transfers from the general fund. And then, public art fund is funded by developer contributions, and in the past, has been supplemented by the general fund. Court enhancement fund is funded by court fees, and that is restricted for use, for court improvement. So the total of all of those committed fund balances, just over 8.1 million. The next category is assigned, and that's on Slide 8. Currently, there is, according to, to town policy, a 10% of those average annual revenues put into the assigned category. Those were put there to fund equipment purchases, pay down debt, and that sort of thing where you'd want to accumulate, a place to accumulate those kinds of, those kinds of funds. We'll be talking more about this during the May 5th council meeting. This is a portion that I'd like to take out and repurpose that amount for, to go towards the unassigned, which you'll see on the next slide. Environmental fund was used to collect environmental fees. That fee was not collected for this fiscal year and is not included in next year's budget as well. Facilities replacement fund and the vehicle replacement fund totaling about 1.8 million together, those are used to accumulate funds to continue projects in facilities or to replace vehicles. The vehicle replacement fund did go down quite a bit this, this year because we did have the purchase of a fire truck just a few months ago, and that is one of our most expensive pieces of equipment. So as it stands, there's just under 3.9 million in assigned. If that policy revision is adopted next month, then that would drop to 2.2, and the 1.6 would move to the, the next slide, which is Slide 9, into the unassigned category. As it stands now, we should end up just, just around $2 million in unassigned at the end of the year. That would include that 900,000 in excess revenues that I'm estimating we'll collect this year over revenues. There's the five-year general fund, annual average revenues is six, just over 16 million. And so with a $2 million fund balance, that's actually, works out to a 12.3% of that number, which would provide about a month and a half of revenue if we needed to use it. The reason that's important is because of the lag that we have in TPT. We might not see, in this situation, in the current situation, it was clear that we were going to have some potential, some uncertainty as far as the collections. However, this would give us a buffer if something wasn't quite as obvious, and we continue, we could continue operations without tapping into the rainy day fund, for example. If that policy is adopted next month, this amount would increase to 3.6- If that policy is adopted next month, this amount would increase to 3.6 million for a year-end fund balance, and that would be 22%. The new policy is recommending that we keep 20%, so we still would have a slight excess over that. Any excess would still get transferred to the Capital Project Fund. And that 3.6 equates to about 2.7 months. We're looking at about two and a half months if we're able to keep 20% in Unassigned. So then just a summary of all funds. Bottom line is that we should end up just about 17 million in all fund balances across the year. And that's the end of the first section. I'm going to take a drink of water and wait for questions.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Mike, if he has any questions, so please ask them now on this section. Mike, do you have any questions on this?
Yeah, actually, I have one quick one. Back to the TPT, you said there were, what, 53 entities that paid 50% of all the revenue?
Correct. So for fiscal year 19, last fiscal year, there were just over 6,800 total tax filers or business entities that filed tax for Fountain Hills. Out of that, 53, 5-3, made up 50% of our revenue.
Yeah, that's a pretty amazing number.
Yes.
That's good to know, especially if, like, they're all still, most of them are still operating today, so.
Exactly. I did, that's the total, the overall. Just for the wholesale retail, there were 4,700 total filers, and seven of those provided half of that wholesale retail number.
Is that a category, is that a grocery stores as well, though?
It would include grocery stores.
Yeah, okay.
And we don't want to get into the detail, because this is proprietary, so I don't want to get too far off on that. But it does give you a good indicator of the importance of the retail in town.
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Mike. Art, do you have any questions?
No, I don't at this time. I think that a lot of the questions I had have been answered, and they were answered, Grady answered a few of them already as well.
Great, thank you. Dennis, do you have any questions?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor. So the number one question would be to Grady. And I see this, the day-to-day operations only being funded for between 1.5 and 2.5 months is alarming. Can you, can you go ahead and fill me in a little bit on what we can do if we don't have enough income to maintain the town's balance?
Yes, I mean, there are other funds that you saw that we could probably tap if we had to, but obviously, my consideration is if you've got a structural issue, you've got to deal with it structurally. And so the primary thing you're going to have to do is, you're going to have to do cutting. And I've worked in organizations that have gone through these downturns in the economy, and this is, this is looking pretty bleak if it continues, you know, the way people are forecasting. So we're going to have to really go into the next fiscal year. It really, your budget that you adopt is really, because statutorily, we have dates that we have to keep and all that. But we're going to be really monitoring the situation, and we're going to have to make sure that we're not dipping into reserves. My mantra is to try to use our existing resources to try to manage through this. So, and one thing that we do have is a very large contingency, I believe it's, David, what was the amount, 1.4 million?
1.7.
1.7, which is fully funded, which we're not wanting to actually tap that. The point is, that is there, and if we had that budgeted this year, we would have been able to take on the Panorama Drainage Project and already have gotten it probably repaired by now. So, I mean, those are, those are some considerations. So I think it's a combination of cutting and doing some other maneuvers through the year to be able to get through the, I think next fiscal year won't really be the difficult one. We're going to have to make adjustments next year in anticipation of the following year.
Right.
But to your point, yes, 45 days of really reserves is concerning. But we've been around two months to three months in the past as well, which is concerning as well. Most cities want to have about six months at least on the operating side, and about 12 months maybe on capital.
Well, I can say that I was around when we did the major cuts eight, nine years ago, and it certainly wasn't very pleasant. The mayor was also around when all that happened. It was very uncomfortable. So, Grady, let's watch this very carefully. I have, I have three other questions.
Sure.
On the public art fee, the balance, has the spire already been paid for?
Sorry, what was?
Could you repeat your question, Dennis?
Certainly. I'm asking if the, if the new art spire, which is going to be setting out just north of Town Hall, has that been paid for? The Tower of Light or whatever.
Oh, yes. No, we just, we just had the contract awarded. Nothing is...
We aren't paying for that. That fund does not pay for that. They're fundraising completely outside of that fund for that piece.
Why don't you get up to the microphone? I'm going to have the Community Services Director come up to the mic.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Brown, just to clarify that, that piece, though it was approved by our council as an art project, part of that was that the Art Committee would be fundraising for that piece outside of town funds. So that fund balance that you're seeing won't be contributing to that art project.
Wow. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And on page number eight, the Environmental Fund, that's not in this year's budget?
The, the environmental fee is not included in this coming year. It wasn't included in the current year, fiscal year 20, and that fee is, that's not included in next year's revenue either.
What, so what you're seeing is, you're seeing the fund balance, and that's what's left after we've expended from it this year. That's what's going to be left at the end of this fiscal year.
And is that because we have questions as to whether it's legal or not?
Correct.
It's, it's, it's being held in abeyance right now until we get an Attorney General opinion on that and also the public safety fee.
Very wise. And the last question I have is on the TPT. I know we can't give any names, but if we have 53 people or 53 companies that are 50%, can I, can you give us the top amount that is being paid down to the 53rd amount that is being paid? So we can see the range of TPT that's being paid without seeing the names?
Absolutely. I can get that information. I don't have it in front of me, but I can do that.
What?
What was that?
Just kidding. Just kidding.
But yes, I can get that for you as far as what...
Yeah, so he's wanting to see, like, you just, you could just put a number by each one on a list, and he can kind of see it in that kind of sequential order. Is that what you're talking about, Dennis?
That is correct, yes.
Maybe from highest to lowest in that order?
Sure.
Yes, please.
Yeah, those, like I had mentioned, those 53 are across all of the different categories. But I can break it down.
Well, I think he was talking about TPT only. Weren't you talking about TPT?
Collected.
That is correct.
Yeah, so he just wants...
By amounts collected, it's most likely all of it's going to be in that wholesale retail, so.
Okay.
Okay.
I would like, if possible, I'd like to see how, from the number one person or the number one company down to number 53, how that spread looks.
Sure, sure, no problem.
And that's...
There is quite a bit of spread in the wholesale retail, because that would also include, you know, vendors at maybe one of the fairs that comes in for one day. You know, so there is going to be quite a spread across the entire category. But even on the top 53, there's going to be some spread, so I'll get that for you.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. Thank you very much for taking my questions.
Thank you. Alan, do you have a question?
No, I have several. Can you hear me?
We hear you.
I have several. Let me start by thanking David. I sent in a fair number of questions, and he gave me written comprehensive responses to all of them. I'm concerned that this budget, frankly, isn't conservative enough. They're talking about maybe opening things up, April, May, some are predicting June, July. And they're saying that even when that happens, things are going to take a long time to get back to normal, people going to restaurants and so on. And I'm afraid that our sales tax is going to be a lot lower than you expected. And if you take, for example, worst case, stay-at-home until, oh, I don't know, July, August, what does that do to our budget, number one, if you assume the same sales tax level? Number two, this, people suspect, experts suspect, that there's going to be a second wave, and they're seeing that in other countries. So I think we're understating, not the seriousness of this, but the trajectory of this, and that concerns me. Couple of specifics. The Downtown Strategy Fund, 514,000. Are we putting money into that fund in this budget?
That, that money comes from the excise sales tax, which the roundabout is, for instance, that's going to go in as being funded entirely by that Downtown Strategy Fund.
Well, I don't know, frankly, why we're parking $514,000 there, given existing circumstances. I don't think I would do that. I'm certainly willing to listen to other approaches, but and that relates also to some specific items in the budget, which I won't get into right now, but it appears to me, and David, tell me if I'm wrong, is the total general fund increasing about $3 million?
The total general fund, for this current year, for fiscal year 20, which I just went over, we're adding about 900,000 to the overall fund balance. As far as the general fund, it's going to be made up of that 1.9 figure and the 1.6 million dollar figure in the Assigned Funds. So that would be a total of about 3.6 overall in the general fund. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, thank you. And you'll pardon me, because I've got paper all over the place here in no particular order. So I think that for now, except I do have several questions that are specific line items that we can get into a little later. Thank you.
Yeah, that should be the next section, so.
Okay, thank you. Sherry, do you have any questions?
Briefly, I have a similar concern to Alan that we could be underestimating, but of course, we don't know at this point. And my understanding, Grady, from your initial comments, is we are going to be reassessing the situation going forward. But my question is for David. How do you think this looks, and how do you think this looks, and what concerns do you have?
I think, you know, this has been a great introduction to Fountain Hills and budgeting, since this is my first budget. It's, it's, there's a lot of uncertainty, and I agree with that. I believe that we've put together a budget, though, that has a lot of flexibility. It's not that much more overall, and we'll get into this in the next section, compared to this year. It was heartening to see that TPT information, and that a lot of our revenues are coming from businesses that are still operating in this condition. Granted, it's different. It's a different situation. We're going to have to wait and see exactly how it plays out as far as how the stay-at-home orders lifted, if it's all at once, if there, you know, if it's a kind of a halfway type point. I will make the comment now that, and I've talked to Grady about this in the past, is that I don't think there's a better time, if there is such a thing, that this happened. We were just off of our highest months as far as revenue go, going into the slower, quote-unquote, "slower" part of the year during the summer. Hope is that when we get those winter visitors back in the fall, that we're up and running and back to normal, or as normal as we can be, I guess, after this, so. Does that answer your question, council member?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, there'll be more.
Thank you. David, you have questions?
Most of my questions, thank you, Mayor, most of my questions were answered by a lengthy conversation, Dave, that you and I had. So I appreciate you taking the time, and I appreciate you, all the work that you've put into the budget. I'm going to take a little bit more of a positive approach than Councilmember Magazine. If I've ever thought about going outside and starting my car in the garage, it was after listening to that. I don't believe this economy can even withstand a shutdown even remotely to July. I don't see that happening. If it goes until July, I think you can put the close sign on America and go home. There's no doubt that all the businesses in town, or a majority of the town, has been, you know, just crushed by this financially. On a positive note, I have talked to two of the managers of some major stores in town who see their sales up over 30%. So that was with everybody stocking up and everything. So, yeah, we've seen a decline in revenue as far as the bedtags, the hotels, the restaurants, and the bars, but by the same token, there's been a huge increase in, you know, grocery stores target, and I'm sure Amazon orders. So I'm hoping it's a little bit more positive. So I know you don't want to comment on the increase, but if it is a, if it is what these people are saying that run the stores, and it is a 30% increase, I think that puts us in a little bit better position. I don't know if you would agree or disagree with that.
Oh, welcome. If it, if there, if we have a 30% increase at some, at some retailers, I'm sure, like I said, I am expecting a little bit of a spike with March activity, and we'll see that obviously reported or filed with DOR this month, and we'll start getting those numbers at the beginning of next month, so. It'd be interesting to see.
Thank you. I'm done, Mayor.
Thanks a lot. Dave, on page six, so we have the Streets Fund restricted balance of 1.3 million. Is that counted in next year's 4.5 or whatever we're going to spend? Or is this otherwise committed to a project that we just haven't finished up yet? How do you explain the, that particularly large fund balance?
So those, those funds are accumulated in the Streets Fund. That 1.3 is after the expected expenditures for this year for projects that were budgeted for. There, I'm not sure, Mr. Weldy might be able to answer if there's any specifics, projects that might not be completed that would add to that fund balance. But then that fund balance would be used or available for next year's... used, uh, or available for next year's Streets projects.
Is it actually in that four point five million dollar figure, or is this going to be available for even more street work?
Uh, this could might not be included, but with, um, that, but then that fund, um,
Okay, so I've been told that seven hundred thousand of it would be included in the next years? Four point five, I guess, budgeted expenditures? So some of that will be used, some of that fund balance will be used in next year's projects.
Okay, um, the other one is on page eight, and you talked a little bit about the, um, Environmental Fund. So was this a decision that we have made to not spend any of the balance because we're still waiting for that, or were you just talking about the fact that we aren't going to, um, reinstall it until we know the answer and this money is available?
Uh, Mayor, this fund we have been drawing down. We, we expended this year for doing the wash maintenance, for instance, um, which is close to two hundred thousand. Um, and so basically, we continue to expend from this fund this year. Um, we're just not, we suspended, the council suspended the fee for this current fiscal year, so there were no collections. But this fund will still be available next year for, um, expending on, um, items related to the Environmental Fund.
Okay, um, so, and you know, when we first set it up, it was, uh, uh, we could use it for operational stuff, but we could also use it for capital. So as we go forward with the Golden Eagle Project, um, if we're, if, if there's an, I didn't look in, close enough into the actual budget book to see if you already have this accounted for, but I just wanted to make sure I brought that up because there's been questions in the past on whether we could use it for capital expenses, and we can do that.
Absolutely.
The Facilities Replacement Fund on this same page, one point two million, um, is some of that going to go towards the painting projects that we, um, that we were waiting to, to, um, to do this year?
I did take a look at the Facilities Replacement, the schedule, and there is, um, painting, exterior painting for Town Hall, as well as some work at, uh, the Community Center as well, scheduled for next year.
But to the Mayor's point, that is the fund that is paying for the campus-wide painting that hopefully will happen. If it doesn't happen late this spring, it might not be able to happen if we don't get it done soon, because, um, it will get too hot and we'll have to wait until the fall.
Okay. It's so hard to, uh, determine when these, when you see these fund balances, and I know some of them are representing projects that are, you know, just crossing over different years, but it's good to, to know what's going to be available, uh, for next year. And, um, the last thing is on this page nine, it's talking about your, um, twelve percent and that it covers one point five months. And you mentioned earlier about how, how we would be able to bolster that up to, um, more than that. But I thought that the, um, six-month, uh, sort of buffer would also included the rainy day fund when you do something like that. I wasn't aware that any cities were expected to have six months worth of unassigned general fund balances. So could you just go over that a little bit more so I could understand?
Well, I'll just explain quickly and I'll, I'll have David jump in, but, um, most cities don't have a rainy day fund the way ours is set up. They'll have a, they'll have a general fund reserve that they build up and they have policies that it's stated for one-time uses, like a new building project they might use to pay down so they don't have to bond for as much. They'll use a big portion of it in the event of, um, they, they have a natural disaster or any unex- unanticipated situation. We're really str- set up at a little bit more unusual the way ours is set up, and it's not the usual scheme that you see in most cities and towns. I'll let David go ahead and talk because he probably has some, uh, Governmental Finance Officers Association kind of comments related to that.
Exactly, and, and thanks, Grady. Um, would, and that'd kind of be, we'll talk about it more, uh, May fifth, but, uh, that twenty percent figure is a GFOA, Government Finance Officer Association, that is a best practice or a suggested best practice, um, to at least maintain twenty percent in unre- uh, unassigned funds. Um, they also have the same type of, uh, recommendation to hold in reserve, um, something like in the rainy day fund. Um, so if we looked at it together, there would be forty percent between the rainy day fund and this unassigned, um, twenty percent each. So that would give us about five months of expenditures, um, or revenues, I should say, to cover expenditures. Uh, the one concern that I had is the way that the, the rainy day fund is set up, we would only be able to use half of that if we needed to. So if our unassigned fund balance was zero today and we needed to go tap the rainy day fund to, uh, take care of expenditures for the rest of the year, we would only be able to take out one point six million. And then next year-
So the rainy day fund, is that something we should look at changing?
It's something that we, we can look at as far as, uh, the restrictions on it. Um, I like the amount. I think some of the, the restrictions, um, especially that being able to spend only half is something that we should be able to look at. It wasn't that-
That would be good because the, the idea of looking at one and a half months here that will become two and a half months, but then we're throwing around a six month, that makes it look a lot, I think it makes it look a lot worse than it really is because we're not counting rainy day fund. So maybe that's something we can, uh, work on.
Sure.
Anybody else have any questions? Ready to move on then?
All right. So next we're going to look at, uh, next year's projections. Uh, so that just brought us up through, uh, June thirtieth, what we've looked at so far. This would be July first going forward. Some overall budget considerations, uh, that I had way back in January when we first started this. Um, obviously, the current situation, um, like I had mentioned, didn't really get, uh, started until the beginning of March. And so a lot of our assumptions and the things that we had used, um, to build the budget or, you know, the, the basis at least, um, were already in place. Uh, as far as the fiscal year twenty ending fund balances, we've already talked about that as far as, um, I did do a thirty percent reduction over these last four months of the year. Um, did that as well with the state shared revenue. The decision was made, um, and this one point might get me in, in trouble with some, but, uh, the decision was made to maintain expectations for a speedy recovery and return to, I keep saying normal, but I'm not even sure what normal is going to be after this. Um, because with, this current situation isn't a structural, uh, type financial problem like the Great Recession was. Um, this was basically a governmental response, um, to a health crisis, and making everybody stay home, um, isn't something that we've encountered before. So, um, I think it's clear that we can't stay this way for very long. Um, hearing that in the news today. And so I, I'm hoping that we do get back to some sort of, um, increased activity. And so I use that, um, if, if we are back to quote-unquote, "normal" by May, June, then we should be starting next year in July, uh, on fairly good, on ground, fairly good ground, especially since-
If I can just jump in too. So as, as I spoke at the very beginning of the council, um, uh, with my introductory remarks, we are going into the budget process with all eyes open and monitoring everything. And, um, while the comment there may be taken like we're Pollyannaish, that's not the case. In fact, um, in just talking to many of our peers, much of what we're doing is, most of the cities are kind of doing and, and watching, wait and see, but also trying to make modifications to their budgets, um, next fiscal year and tracking it. And if they have to make reductions or, um, cuts or freezes or what, you know, the vernacular is, they're ready to do it. Um, and some are hit a little bit more harder than we are because of, they're like these, uh, big aircraft carriers. They have to react now because they're carrying a lot of overhead costs and they don't have the ability to react quite as quickly or nimbly as we can. Um, not saying that we're better off than they are, it's just that they have, a lot of their revenues are focused on, like, maybe auto sales or tourism, like big-time hotels, Paradise Valleys, fifty-four percent of their revenue, they're anticipating bed tax, hotel tax is going to be gone starting next July. So they're having to make adjustments already because they're not as diverse as some of the other communities. So just wanted to make sure that you understand that we're not going into next fiscal year, um, with rose-colored glasses and thinking everything's fine. We are going into it, um, all eyes open and being able to make adjustments if we need to. And I'll let David continue.
Great points, thank you. Um, so then as far as that next point, um, just a reminder that budget authority, that the bottom-line budget numbers that we're discussing, uh, from here on out, those are not the same as fund balance. So budget authority is only useful if we have the revenues and the resources, um, to, to expend them. So just keep that in mind. As far as the tentative budget, um, that's going to be considered on May fifth as well. Um, that's going to set the maximum amount. Um, it'd be great if we hit maximum revenues for next year. Um, but even if we did, we don't have maximum expenditures programmed for next year, and that's where, uh, that one point seven, uh, million-dollar contingency comes in. So we'll talk about that a little bit more. Uh, but as far as, as revenues, um, as Grady's already mentioned, I will do, uh, quarterly, uh, budget updates, uh, revenue updates, and I'm looking at doing those at the second meeting of the month following a quarter close. So our first quarter would run July through September. Uh, it looks like mid, the second meeting in October would be the first formal, um, update on revenue collections. Um, however, I just wanted to let you know that I, I'm more than happy to send out, you know, a monthly, this is what we did last month for TPT, um, in an email at least, um, so that you're aware of those. Um, as I mentioned, the larger contingency is meant to be a buffer, um, for, uh, revenues. If we don't meet our revenue projections, um, that's going to help buffer what, before we have to make any cuts, so. And then, obviously, depending on revenue and how it's tracking, um, adjustments to expenditures could be made. Then slide fourteen are the specific revenue assumptions. Um, I do believe, you know, as Grady had mentioned, we do take a conservative approach, and that's true for this year. Um, it was true with the previous finance director as well. Um, we basically have in the past, excuse me, have in the past, uh, consistently underestimated revenues and overestimated expenditures and have finished the year with more revenues than we thought and less expenditures than we thought. So that's how we're able to add to fund balance. Um, as Grady mentioned, there was, for this next year, there were no, uh, revenues included for Copperwind or, uh, Keystone, when that's up and running, uh, and contributing towards TPT revenue. The modest one percent increase in TPT revenue, um, we'll see later that the actual increase from the current fiscal year to next fiscal year, uh, is at one point three million. Of that, one point one million is strictly related to the three-tenths of a percent, um, rate increase that took effect in November. So like I had mentioned, that wasn't included in this current year's budget. Um, just carrying that new percentage into next year adds one point one million. Uh, the additional two hundred thousand is, uh, the increased taxable activity that I'm looking at for next year. Um, also the existing, uh, user fee schedule was used, uh, to calculate revenues. Um, that will be a discussion that we're going to have to have later in the fall. That, uh, study's been completed. We were almost, uh, almost made it to the workshop where we were going to present it to you, but then that got canceled, uh, due to the current situation. Uh, so those new, uh, revised fees, you'll be able to see in the fall and we'll make some decisions then. If that, um, if that new fee schedule is adopted and implemented, then that would obviously increase revenues, um, slightly for those type of activities. State shared revenue, um, we did receive the estimates that were used in the proposed budget in March, in mid-March from the league. Um, it was, it might have been the same week, we got a follow-up email from, from the league saying they're going to have to send out new, uh, estimates, but we won't have those until May. Um, obviously, the, the state shared sales tax, that, uh, projection's made by Department of Revenue, and, uh, it's going to take them some time to see how this, this current situation's going to, um, play out for next year. Uh, VLT and the HERF funds, uh, both are estimated through Department of Transportation. The VLT works similar to sales tax, um, depending obviously on, uh, car registrations, new car sales and, uh, and that sort of thing. So it's going to take some time to get them, um, some new estimates. HERF, uh, is a little bit different. That's basically, um, it's a set amount per gallon, as you know. When you go and buy a gallon of gas, it's a set amount that, uh, goes towards HERF, the state sales tax or HERF user fee tax. Um, that's obviously going to be affected by the demand for gas. Right now, with people staying at home, everybody knows that, uh, you're not filling up your gas tank as much. Um, so that's going to obviously be lower for the next few months, and hopefully that increases, uh, with the summer. But we'll have to wait and see. As mentioned before, the, the income tax is not, uh, affected. The next slide, slide fifteen, is, uh, summary basically of, of the operating fund revenues and the comparisons, uh, to the current year. You can see that one point three million dollar difference in the TPT, and I explained that, um, that most of that increase is just due to the rate, uh, increase. As far as the methodology used, um, I didn't mention this. There are, um, there's, it's kind of a, a combination of trend analysis that is used on prior-year collections, uh, by classification, as well as some forecasting formulas. Um, we don't use either one exclusively, um, but it is a combination, so. As far as the state shared revenues, those are the amounts that we received in March, and those will be lower, um, once we have the new estimates in May. However, like I said, we have to have the tentative, the maximum budget, um, amount set by then, um, and then we can revise those as revenues come in. Permits and licensing is mostly unchanged, uh, same with fines and fees, and then others as well. So total expenditures, nineteen point two million for next year, and like I said, that includes the one point seven, uh, million in contingency. So if you take that out, uh, we're just a couple So if you take that out, uh we're just a couple hundred thousand dollars different um than we were last year. Next slide, slide sixteen is the expenditure considerations. Uh that contingency that I had just talked about, that is included in the general government um division. So we'll see that in a later slide. Um it will show as a large increase because like I said, last year we only had about four hundred and fifty thousand uh in contingency. So there will be a a large percentage increase for on that slide. Um that contingency does provide budget authority if we receive the revenues. And like I said, if we don't have the revenues, then there's there's no need um to even consider using contingency. Expenditures excluding contingency, you can see is one seventeen point five million for next year. Um and the point was made on the previous slide that that's only a couple hundred thousand dollars more than it was for this year. Internal service fund, um there was a request uh to add a technology replacement fund. Um that would allow us to charge departments and divisions on an annual basis uh to accumulate money to replace uh computers, desktops, servers, um that sort of thing. Uh the the charges would be based on uh FTE count and there would be a a one-time contribution uh from the the general fund to start this um internal service fund. That would be fifty thousand dollars that's included in this next year's budget. And then there's also, um like I said, those charges by departments and divisions, um that would be a total of forty-five thousand that would be collected across all departments and divisions uh but based on their FTE count. So on the following slides, you'll see that is a large line item. Um I crossed all of them, so I'm just saying it upfront, so you don't have to hear me say it on each slide. Okay, so then the next slide is a a summary basically by department, division, um and then the the changes. So you have uh town council at seventy-five thousand, administration at two point two, the court just over four hundred thousand, general government, this is where that one point seven is, um so that total is two point two. Public works at one point one, development services just under one million, community services uh just under three million, and then the public safety at nine point two.
And David, just for clarification, the big increase here is the um contingency.
Correct.
The big driver.
Right.
So it looks like it's thirteen and a half percent increase overall, but a big proportion of that is from that contingency.
Absolutely. I I don't have the percentage worked out if you took out the contingency, but yes, that's a majority of that. Next slide, slide eighteen uh goes into detail or more uh detailed information for town council. Um Grady had mentioned that originally uh we had programmed a two and a half percent um cost of living increase uh across the town um as being effective July first. Obviously, that was put into um the model early on in January. It's not an easy number to take in and put out uh or pull out, but uh that decision was made that we're not going to include it. So on each of these slides, um the wages, employment taxes and benefits, um that original two and a half percent increase is included in these slides, these individual slides. However, by the time you receive the tentative budget, um these will all go down by that two and a half percent. So keep that in mind across all slides.
We're not, we can't do the adjustment of the council wages just by doing a cost of living adjustment.
Right. Um so you can see, there's not a lot of change. This is the first example of that internal service fund. Um this seven thousand dollars would actually be council's portion uh based on their FTE count uh towards that uh replacement fund. Next slide, slide nineteen is the administration uh expenditures. Um this is one of the larger uh departments. Uh it includes HR, IT, finance, uh to name a few. There are fifteen point two FTE in this department, or about twenty-five percent of town staff. Um that increase, obviously in the wages, employment and benefits, includes that two point five that's going to be coming out. Uh dues and memberships. There are a lot of uh professional organizations that the um different departments belong to and that's included in that amount, along with uh probably the largest portion of that is uh IT, their licenses and uh maintenance subscriptions. This department's uh continued on slide twenty. Contractual services, there is uh what look appears to be a a large increase in contractual services. Excuse me, the the main drivers uh behind that number, um if you remember back in August of twenty nineteen, uh the the town attorney's contract was renegotiated, um there was a slight increase, uh annual increase for that. That negotiated price continues through at the same rate as it does since the negotiation for fiscal year twenty-one. So that's part of it. Uh it counts for about thirty thousand. Um we do also have a primary election that's coming up in August that's included in that number. And finally, uh there is about fifty thousand in finance uh for any, it's kind of a contingency, just in case we needed um an audit or a study around finance. Uh we do have uh the development fee, biennial audit, that's included, so just to keep that in mind. Um as far as the rest of that slide, there's not uh anything extremely remarkable. There is some additional IT equipment that's included uh in the equipment line item and then of course the internal service. The next department is municipal court. Uh this department, there really hasn't been much uh change. Um it does account for three point six FTEs overall. The next slide is the continuation of court. Um contractual services actually went down a little bit. Uh that includes IGAs with the state uh Supreme Court, um as well as the court uh collections clerk uh is in there as well. It's part-time. Again, internal service is uh that additional four thousand um is the technology replacement. Next department is general government and this is the one um again where that one point seven million contingency lives. So you'll see that on the the next slide. Um there are um it's pretty consistent, like I had said, this this uh division is used to pay for expenses like insurance, um liability insurance, that sort of thing uh that would apply town-wide. You can see on the next slide, uh continuation of general government um in that contractual services. Uh last year or this current year, sorry, fiscal year twenty, uh this is where the user fee study was paid for um and the general plan uh review and update. So that is why uh we have a larger fiscal year twenty amount and not as much for next year. Um the remaining three hundred and ninety-five thousand uh includes insurance and uh as well as community contracts. Uh supplies, there is a a large increase there, um at least double. That is uh includes a fiftieth anniversary amount, um a fifty thousand dollars, so that's why that increased. Uh this one, I'm going to have you ignore the internal service. Um it's just basically an accounting uh way general general government pays the expenditures um, you know, for like a copiers and that sort of thing. We use general government and then um the different divisions get charged based on their usage, so you can disregard that at this point. Um and then of course, the contingency amount that we've been talking about. It's a crazy percentage number there, but. The next slide, uh twenty-five goes into public works. Uh there are twelve point four three FTEs in public works. Um that accounts for the wage, employment and benefits. Uh dues and memberships. Um the reason for the decrease in dues and memberships is that this was the uh department that we used to actually pay the environmental fee on town-owned property. So that was about eight thousand dollars that was included in this year's budget. Um obviously, it wasn't paid because it wasn't charged, uh but we did not carry that forward to next year. So that's the decrease. Not much of a change on the other line items. Contractual services uh stayed about the same as did supplies. Uh equipment went up a little bit and that is where um I believe it was about seven thousand dollars for the suggested metal metal detectors for council chambers uh would be paid from, so that's the additional seven thousand. Next slide, slide twenty-seven is development services. There are nine FTEs in development services currently. Um not huge changes on the first slide. Uh there were some changes to the uh meetings and trainings. That's basically the professional organization um for code enforcement, GIS and the building safety, building inspectors. Uh ma- maintenance and repair, uh they do maintain uh three vehicles as well as the large plotter uh printer and copier, so that's what's included. Next slide is the contractual services, uh still with development services. Um this was a large decrease. Um this was due to the fact that we are no longer um contracting out inspecting services. Uh this was something that we had done in the past for developers to expedite. Um what had happened was we would receive that invoice for those services and then the developers um would send us revenue and then we had just pay it back out to uh the contracted company. Um so this is basically reducing it on both sides. Uh that's no longer necessary or that's no longer the way that it's actually um processed. Now, if we do have those um services, expedited services, the inspectors would bill the developer directly and we're not involved. And then, not exactly sure what the four thousand dollars was this year, um that's not there for next year.
At one time.
Yeah. So that's development services. Next slide is uh slide twenty-nine for community services. Uh this is the largest department in the town. Uh they do have um currently this fiscal year, just about twenty and uh half FTEs. There is a supplement that is being recommended for a full-time's grant, full-time groundskeeper as well as a slight increase in uh community service representative at the community center. So that is some of the increase in the wages, taxes and benefits. Obviously, it still applies um as far as that two and a half percent increase coming out, so these will be reduced in the tentative budget. Uh the only other item on this slide that I wanted to call out is uh maintenance and repair. Uh due to the new uh restrooms that are open at Fountain Park, the opening of the Darrow Trail, um as well as the Linear Park, um there are more um obviously need more budget to cover those items, so that's included in the maintenance and repair. Uh that continues on the next slide, slide thirty, um because that does affect the supplies uh line item as well. Contractual services went down, as you can see. Uh the capital expenditures, this is uh a unique item, um it hasn't been included in any of the prior slides. Uh this was uh the result of two um recommended supplements. Uh the first part being the UV system for those uh splash pad at Fountain Park for a total of thirty-five thousand and then the uh truck for the new groundskeeper at twenty-five And then there is, you'll see, there's also a line item for contingency in uh community services. That's basically there in case uh community services maybe holds an event and they have more revenue than what was anticipated, um it would allow them to spend that revenue, that excess revenue within their department. Next slide, thirty-one, we're almost done. Uh the next slide, thirty-one is law enforcement. Um you can see that there's a fi- an overall five point one percent increase. Um in that contractual services, uh there is a breakdown. Uh for the current year, it's just under four point seven million uh is what we're paying for patrol services. Um there is sixty-eight thousand that we have budgeted for uh jail expenses and then twenty-one thousand for uh animal control. Those numbers, um as far as the jail and the animal control uh stay the same for next fiscal year or nearly the same. Um the patrol services increased to uh four point nine million. Then the next slide, slide thirty-two is fire and emergency medical services. Um typically, uh there there's obviously more line items than fire, um because not only do we have the contract expenses, but we have um the expenses to maintain equipment and uh buy new equipment and that sort of thing. Um the only thing that I wanted to call out as far as the contractual services for fire, uh increased three percent, that's by contract. Last year, um the fire service alone was three million five hundred and fifty thousand and then next year it's uh three million six hundred and fifty thousand. So then we'll go through, you'll hear, uh you heard me mention a few of the supplemental re- uh requests.
I I think this is a good stopping point perhaps for questions.
Last slide.
Okay.
Before questions.
Oh, catch me by surprise there, okay. Um Dave, do you have any questions?
Uh thanks, man. Just as um I had mentioned at the um budget uh budget retreat, that I was quite concerned with the expenditures uh and the contract for MCSO as far as um the um overtime that we're paying as well as um the staffing or the um the uh deputies versus how how many deputies are actually on patrol versus what we're paying for and everything. I don't want to go into a lot of detail. Um I think that this should be best saved for executive session. Um the reason that I didn't um really hound on it and and bring it up more is the fact that so we're in this uh pandemic and this crisis, but I definitely would like um Grady, uh Dave and my fellow council members to please, uh once this all passes and everything that we- once this all passes and everything, that we sit down there in executive session and thoroughly go over some troubling issues that I have with the MCSO contract.
We hear you, and we could set up a follow-up on that.
I yield.
Thanks, Dave. Sherry, you have any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not for this section. Thank you. Mayor, can you hear me? Oh, okay. I was having a problem with, for some reason, I couldn't hear anybody.
All right, I'll just repeat.
I'm sorry. I don't know what's happening.
Okay, I'll yield next person.
I think the mayor's off the call.
Is the mayor offline?
She might be coming back in.
So, so we've heard from Councilmember LaCron and Councilmember Spelitch. I'm just kind of going in the order. Councilmember Brown, did you have any questions?
I think it's Alan first.
I'm sorry, I skipped over Alan. Staff just brought that to my attention. Alan, you said you had a number of questions. Did you have any questions for the staff and myself?
Yeah, not a number of them, just suggestions. There are some line items that seem to me that we may want to hold in abeyance until after we get a report on the first quarter's revenue. One of them would be the video surveillance cameras, the $50,000. Another would be the tech replacement fund and the metal detector. Now, we're not talking a lot of money, probably talking a couple hundred thousand dollars and maybe a couple of other things. But personally, I prefer that we not expend any of those funds for those items until we hear what it looks like after the first quarter. And also mention that, let's see. Well, I was going to say we have to be careful. I know you will be careful. But for example, general government supplies was up 120%. Meetings goes up, not much. I just think we have to be very judicious in how we spend the money we have. And if we can delay spending money until the end of the first quarter, to me, that would make sense.
Good comments, and just to let you know that even though that this is a programmed in the budget, I had already mentioned at the remarks at the beginning that I was going to be working with staff on trying to make some, put together some reductions if we need to have some reductions. And we are going to be definitely making sure we're not spending anything we don't need to be spending money on.
Correct. Appreciate it. Let me do, while I'm on, let me just say, I want to thank you, Grady, and David for an outstanding job. This is not easy, especially in a year like this. So you've done an outstanding job, and I'm sure we all appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the mayor back on?
Yep, I'm here.
Sorry, Mayor, we had Alan go next in the interest of time. I'll let you continue being mayor.
Dennis is next, please.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, Dennis. Do you have any questions?
I, you know, I really don't have questions. A compliment. The internal services, I would like to commend that. I'm glad to see that added to the budget. I would like to see it spread out a little bit, David, if you could, because I'm sure it's not just for IP. But I really appreciate you doing that to the town. And so far, your presentation has been excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if I'm hearing you right, so perhaps, David, did we also include in this estimate, did we also include like the control room equipment for this council chamber upgrade? Because a lot of that's computer type of equipment.
Yeah, and as far as the actual purchase and the upgrade, that wasn't included in the replacement. I'd have to check with Mike Chikaron on.
So if I'm hearing correctly, the Councilmember Brown is saying he supports this. Maybe we spread it out, figure out the life cycle, and maybe if we can go as long as we can so that it doesn't hit, you know, as much in one year. We were trying to do some seed money for the first year, and perhaps we can look at maybe that first year not funding it quite as much as well. So that, good comment.
Well, I just really appreciate what you've done with what we've got because it's, you go into any of the, any of the offices and the equipment is all clearly our cake. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Dennis. Art, do you have any questions?
Hi, thank you. I would like to make a couple of comments. And that is that I want to thank Dave and Grady. I sent a litany of questions this afternoon, and you responded to those very quickly. And you've also addressed them in a lot of your narrative tonight. I would second what Councilman Magazine had indicated that at this point right now, with the uncertainty of the economy, that the needs versus wants, that we should just sit tight and we should not be moving forward, in my opinion, with any of these extra expenditures until we know exactly what's going to happen. And that would also include a, what I would believe would be prudent is having a freeze at the moment in regards to hiring, bringing on additional groundskeeper at this time, bringing on additional trucks and things of that nature. Just hit the pause button for a moment, and let's wait and see what happens here in the next couple of months, at least it's through the first quarter and even into the second. I don't think that, I don't think that spending anything right now is a good idea. I also agree with Councilman Spelitch that we need to really evaluate. Everyone's going to be evaluating these contracts. You saw what just happened with Queen Creek, and we really need to scrutinize every dollar at this point because we're going to, I think, need to.
Thank you. I think we got the message loud and clear. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, do you have any questions?
Just kind of a big picture thing, and I just want to make sure I understand it from a, you know, 20,000-foot level. So we have the rainy day fund, we have the unassigned general fund balance, and we have a, I think, 1.7 billion contingency in general government. So we basically have three different areas where we have extra money just because in terms of emergencies and contingencies. Is that, am I hearing all that correctly?
You would be correct in everything that you said. Just a reminder, the 1.7 in contingency is not any part of fund balance. It's not, it's not a resource, it's just the budget authority in case those resources are collected. Does that make sense?
So it's not, so it's not actual money.
So it'd be like, as an example, Councilmember, it's a good question you bring up. So if we receive like these tourism and sports authority grants that we've received in the past for like the basketball court or the tourism grants that we get from the tribal communities next door, that gives us the authority, because we have budget authority, to receive those grant monies and we could expend them. So it's not money that is just like sitting in the bank.
Okay, right. Okay, well, thanks for clarifying that, and that makes total sense. So David, were you going to bring something back in May then as far as changing a little bit of our policy with the other funds? I mean, is this, you said we're kind of a unique situation in terms of how we do some of that rainy day stuff. So I'm just wondering, you know, between the unassigned and the rainy day, I mean, is this, you know, excellent policy? Is it good policy? Are we going way overboard or too conservative? Or is this just, you know?
I think there will be a discussion May 5th regarding the financial policies of the town. The part that most concerned me was that assigned portion. We're basically holding on to the same amount of money in two different places to do the same thing. That's not effective, obviously, or efficient. This first revision to the financial policy specifically addresses that assigned portion of the general fund and moving that to unassigned so that we can be closer to what the GFAW best practice is for unassigned fund balance. With the comments that have been made here tonight, I do agree with the rainy day fund and where it is and how it's set up. I don't necessarily think that some of the restrictions that are placed on it are effective today as maybe when they were first implemented. And I think those can be improved some.
Are you going to bring something forward to that effect in May? Or is that just something you're thinking about?
The ones, I didn't include any revisions to the restrictions on the rainy day fund in this current revision. It's something that I can go back and draft. I would like to be able to go ahead and go forward on May 5th with what I do have regarding that assigned fund balance. And then I can bring back something maybe in the fall with some further information on the restrictions for a fund, or rainy day fund.
Is that okay, Mike?
Uh-oh.
That wasn't me this time. I have a couple of questions. The internal service fund, was that, is that something that's pretty typical for municipalities to break it down and kind of charge the departments?
Yes, it is. In fact, Jenny, and a number of the cities I've worked in, you'll have that for like copier charges. You'll have a mailroom charge, and you'll have your IT. You'll have your vehicle replacement fund. Sometimes you'll even have like a facilities charge that goes back to each, that includes the cost for the utilities and maintenance and upkeep of the space that the department's utilized. So it's a pretty common methodology, and it works really well. What I like about it on equipment and vehicles is that those are really big-ticket items, and it helps you plan a little bit more that you save towards the replacement based on the life cycle of the items. So it's a pretty normal type of situation. And it was something that I've been wanting to do for the last couple of years to address. So I appreciate the council's support on that concept.
Thanks. As long as you don't charge me by the hour every time I bother Mike LaCron. So I just wanted to go to page 17, which is the operating fund expenditures, and to just, I just did a quick, just a little bit of math just to get rid of the contingency for one. And that $19 million is really, without the contingency, is $17,540. So it's really, the percentage goes down quite a bit. It goes to like 3.5. So I just wanted to say that as we're going forward here, the message is that we have to approve a maximum amount by a deadline. But we're not going to have all the information that's current by the time we have that deadline. So we're adding these uncommitted contingency amounts and others so that we have the authority to spend should things improve. But I don't, I don't want the message to be out there that we have a general fund going up by 13% and that all of these things that we're talking about are just going to be there in stone. And I know that everybody's been saying that same thing. And I just hope that we can make it a very simple message so that people really understand that we see what's happening. But this does give us some flexibility for the future to have this uncommitted contingency amount. And I appreciate that you did that.
Thank you. You explained it perfectly. So I have a feeling that the word contingency is probably going to be the buzzword for the year. And we'll be hearing it quite a bit over the next 12 months. Also, just as a reminder, that council often approves those budget transfers from contingencies. So if that contingency gets used or is proposed to be used, it will be before council to approve, so.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Something happened to my phone, too. I got kicked out of the call. So I had to look up the number and dial back in. But so I caught your last few words, and I appreciate those. And, you know, I'm thinking more just long-term in terms of extra money that perhaps like David said, gets carried over year to year. That, I mean, you know, we're looking at some bigger projects coming up with, you know, the payment management program in Fountain Park possibly. And, you know, I'm just wondering if there's going to be some extra money available down the road as, you know, once we get past this crisis. And, you know, if we change our fiscal policy a little bit, just to maybe free up some. That was just, you know, a consideration.
Absolutely.
Good point, Mike. So if we're ready to go on, we'll do that.
All right. The next section is on the capital projects.
Actually, we skipped over the supplemental request, but.
All right, we did, I'm sorry. So Slide 34 is basically just a summary of the supplemental requests. A lot of these I mentioned in the individual slides. As far as total requests, there are just over a million submitted by department directors. Not quite 700,000 of those were not recommended, leaving 346,000 as recommended. That amount is broken down into one-time charges. This is a one-and-done of 255,000. This slide was actually, we have a little bit of disconnect between this and the actual green sheet that's included in your proposed budget notebooks. The ongoing is actually, that should be about 93,000, which included some volunteer insurance that was later approved. That's going to be an ongoing expense. Also in that ongoing is the FTE groundskeeper, the increase in the CSR, and forgot the other. UV, is that in there? The UV protection? Is it in the 91? Okay, sorry. And then there are revenue offsets. It's broken up, I believe, just over 15,000 in revenue offsets for the one-time charges. And then 8,500 in revenue offsets for the ongoing. That leaves 324,000 with that other item that was left off of this slide. 324,000 would be a contribution from the operating fund for those supplements.
David, some of the ongoing was for like the turkey trot, which has been growing by every year. And so that would be for us to spend more money, but it's going to be offset by the fees that we collect, the entry fees for that.
Correct. So that's part of the revenue offsets that are included for those. Do you want to take questions on those or just going to? Okay. So then we'll go into the capital projects portion. These projects you did see during the budget retreat. I summarized them here in this slide presentation. However, I also sent you individual slides out in the email earlier today that has each individual project, the funding sources, and as well as a photo of the project. I'm just going to go through the projects. And then if you have specific questions about projects, then we can. projects, then we can ask Mr. Weldy or Mrs. Goodwin to come up and, and address those questions. So in the stormwater management and drainage section, everybody's heard of Panorama Drive the last few months. There are improvements needed there at 1.9 million. The Golden Eagle impoundment area, 500,000. Paulina Brantley Detention Basin for 100,000, and then miscellaneous drainage projects for The Streets and Sidewalks section of CIP, there's Fountain Hills Boulevard Shoulder Paving for 700,000, unpaved alley paving for 308, the intersection out here by Town Hall for Sidewalk infill program, that's a continuing project year after year for 200,000. The Palisades Median Landscaping for 150, the proposed Desert Vista Crosswalk for 100,000, another intersection improvement on Avenue of the Fountains and Verdi River for 75,000. And then finally Shea Boulevard Widening, part of that study, for 25,000. Parks and Recreation has four projects for next year. Four Peaks Park upgrades continue for 330,000. The fountain lighting replacement, we had just heard, I believe it was last week's council meeting, to get that project started with 50,000 in this current fiscal year, there will be another 150,000 to complete that project next year. Four Peaks Park Parking Lot Improvements for 65,000, and then also another continuing project over, continuing from year to year, the 50,000 for the surveillance cameras. Then the traffic signal, there's one traffic signal project for 50,000 at Palisades and Eagle Ridge slash Palomino. The facility replacement to capital projects funded by that, by that fund, and that's the HVAC controllers at the community center for 70,000, and also the fire control panel at the library for 80,000. There's also a contingency in the capital projects fund, which basically, in case we need to make any, maybe matching parts of grants to fund projects, that would come from there.
Does that...
Or any unforeseen projects.
Does that have funding backing it up, though?
What's that?
That has money backing that up, right?
So then the summary slide for all, all of the projects that are presented here for consideration, a total of 5.4 million for all of those projects. However, I wanted to give you some summary information as far as the capital project fund itself. If you remember from the beginning of the presentation, we're expecting about a $3.7 million fund balance. If all goes well, we'll be able to add about $1 million to that fund over the course of the year, and that's mostly from the sales tax, the 50% of the construction sales tax that's received. As far as the projects that are included in this presentation as CIP-funded, those CIP-funded projects total just over 3 million. So that would leave us a year-end fund balance at June 30th, 2021, of about 1.6 million.
So Mayor and Council, David and I have been talking about this, and in light of the pandemic that's been going on, and I heard some comments of concern from Councilmember Magazine, and, and what I'd like to do, if the council would support this, is that we've got a couple, what I would call key projects. They're, they're absolutely must-haves. We have the Panorama Drainage Project, which is basically the sinkhole that we absolutely have to get started. The other one is the, we're very close to getting the roundabout underway, and that is one that is a high priority due to safety concerns, and we've got some hard numbers, I believe, on that, so we can get moving on that in June, July, and get that done. And finally, the, the Fuller Project over at Fountain Par, I'm sorry, at Golden Eagle Park, the, the drainage issues, that's for like a half million dollars. I would say that those are the top priorities, and the other ones, maybe we just kind of sit on and kind of wait and see, and see how things are tracking revenue-wise and economically for the region and for our town. If the council's fine with that direction, we'd leave these projects as are, or as they are, but we would not commence with those until we've had our very first quarterly meeting with the council on those other projects. Does that make sense?
Do you want me to go ask everybody if they have questions, and they can answer that at the same time?
Sure.
Okay, let's start with Dave, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm fine with all of that. Grady, I think that's a great idea. Better to be cautious, and as far as questions related to this, I don't have any. And if I didn't thank you guys, Dave, thank you very much for the presentation. Really comprehensive, totally understood it for once, and nice to watch.
Thank you.
For once, huh? Jerry, do you have any questions?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple. I understood what you said, Grady. I guess my question is, my first question is, you mentioned the roundabout. I mean, you're not talking about something that's listed in this last presentation, though, right? The capital project?
It's in, it's in the current year's capital budget.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not one of next year's, but what happens is with these capital projects, is that they typically roll over from year to year.
Right. I was just looking at the list, and I was wondering why it wasn't there. I understand. So my second question is, and I know, I know these numbers are, you know, like our map, so I understand that this is something that we continue to talk about and decide upon, but I noticed that the Palisades Median Landscaping is listed in here, and I could maybe not be remembering this correctly, but I thought the last we talked about that, it was just a discussion, and someone was going to get back to us, or did we talk more on that? I just, I just was surprised it's in here.
Counsel, Councilwoman, you're absolutely right. Not that, what I heard, and Councilmember Charnell brought it to our attention, I believe it was yesterday, that at the retreat, he got the impression that even though that was a, a, a retreat and a workshop, it was something that we didn't have you actually take action on. But he reminded us that that was something that the council didn't have warm, fuzzy feeling about, and should probably maybe not be in the capital project listing. And I believe that you are correct on that, that the council did not really want to proceed with that, and, and Mike reminded us of that earlier.
Okay, well, then that makes more sense. And then I do agree with your initial proposal a few minutes ago on the three different projects, and I also want to say thank you for this presentation. It was easy to follow, and I like that you're saying here slide number, and that has, has made it very easy to follow as well. Thank you all for that.
Thank you.
Thanks. I also wanted to point out on slide 38, on the Streets and Sidewalks slide, that Avenue of the Fountains, the, the third one down, third project down, is a portion of the roundabout. There is half included in the current fiscal year, and then that second half is included for next fiscal year as well. So just to point that out.
Oh, I see that. That makes sense.
Sure.
Thank you for that explanation. I'm done. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Jerry. Alan?
Um, I don't have any questions, and I've offered my accolades, and they're heartfelt. I really appreciate all the help. And I do appreciate the fact that we are going to delay as much as possible the expenditure of funds until the end of the first quarter. Clearly, there are as much that we can delay, but I think there are, are things, a project that we can delay with doing, without doing any harm to our town or to our situation. So I appreciate that.
Thanks, Alan. Dennis?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions. I would echo the fact that Grady has absolutely nailed the capital projects, in my opinion. He has absolutely put everyone in the same sequence that I would have put it in, and I appreciate that very much. Thank you, Grady.
Thanks, Dennis.
Thanks a lot, Dennis. Art?
Yeah, I would just say that it was a nice presentation, and thank you, Dave. Thank you, Grady. I think it was very painless, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Art. Mike, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just, you know, I agree with the prioritization on those three major projects. I think that's good to proceed with those. And as far as the Palisades Median, I just think if we clean that up and maintain it better, you can have a really good natural look without having to add irrigation or granite, that kind of thing. I mean, there's a lot of medians in North Scottsdale, Dynamite, that kind of thing that are natural like that, that look really good. They just take a little more maintenance, I think, and, you know, we just, you know, I don't think we need irrigation out there because everything's pretty much natural the way it is, and it's pretty, pretty mature. And then the only, the only other thing I'd like to see added at some point, and maybe at the end of the line or the middle of the road, I don't know, is looking at extending the left-hand turnpocket on Palisade, or on Fountain Hills Boulevard, basically in front of Four Sons and Safeway there. I mean, it only holds about five cars right now, and there's minimal vegetation in the median right there, and I, I just think we need some kind of, if we need a study, you know, so be it, but I, I think it would be a minimal cost to just extend that left-hand turnpocket, because a lot of times there's cars waiting to go, you know, westbound on the Palisades, and they creep into the traffic lane and kind of a safety thing. Especially happens in the morning when the kids are going to high school, and then even other times during the day with very busy congested intersections. So I think that needs to be added to the CIP list somewhere.
Uh, Councilmember Charnell, good, good call. I just want to let you know, the Public Works Director brought to my attention that, based on concerns that have been raised, that they will start doing some traffic counts there, which is usually part of the, the very initial, you know, work that's done. The other part I think we'll handle with this is that the town engineer has money for very basic studies and such, so I think that might be something we can do, and then we could bring this back to the council Subcommittee on Traffic and Pedestrian Safety for them to weigh in. You're, you're bringing up a, a point that I've heard from residents before about that location. So thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I was going to say, I know we talked about it at that, at our Intersection Safety Committee, but I forgot about it putting it on here. The, at some point, the shoulder paving for Fountain Hills Boulevard, because that job is half-done, so that would be one that I would hope to keep kind of in the, in the loop. And I really wanted to mention the lights, the fountain lights, because obviously we started that this year. We're, we're starting that with the $50,000 that we put towards that at the last meeting, and it's, as we anticipate coming out of this and doing things that we, that are fun and that we want to proceed with, the lights are a little bit of a timing issue, so I hope we can revisit that part of that, because I know that we're trying to get them ordered and get everything kind of lined up for next December. I know there's a lot of variables here, but I'd like to see...
Mayor, thank you, thank you very much, because that, that is something that was missed in, in my recommendations. I would probably amend it to include that, because we've already committed going forward, the council has committed with the contract to this company at the last meeting. So I guess I would amend what I said previously about the three projects. I would add this as the fourth, because it is a maintenance issue. The lights are failing. If we don't do something, we're going to have a fountain, and our residents are going to be very upset that there's no lighting on it at night. So we will definitely make note of that, and I appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Thank you. Just have a question about streets in general. So when we talk about these capital projects, that doesn't preclude all of the regular street maintenance and all the people on Chicory and Emerald and El Lago and Boeot and all these places that we've been hearing all year long. The, the fact is, we're talking about capital projects, actual building projects. So I just wanted to maybe ask you to clarify the relationship between our pavement management or what we might be doing going forward as opposed to these capital projects.
Um, yes, and our Public Works Director is here at the podium. Just, just to let you know, Mayor, so we do, I mean, we don't treat it as capital, but it is capitalized. So when we're doing mill and overlay or reconstruction as part of the contract, council awarded a contract to M.R. Tanner, and basically, a number of those streets that we do with our existing Streets Fund are capitalized, and they're, they're not just doing the, the small minor things, like fixing, you know, cracked ceiling and, and putting ceiling and preservatives on the roads, but we're also, we're also capitalized projects that we're doing. So the difference would probably be is if we were able to identify what we needed to bond, as an example, for our streets, we'd probably put together a capital improvement program that would identify various different sources of funding. It would include bond funding, bond proceeds, and probably the, the HERF money that we get from the state that'd help offset some of those costs, and that would definitely be in the CIP program. But to your point, we just don't have enough in our annual street maintenance program or pavement management program to do all these neighborhood streets and streets that we get contacted all the time about. And at some point, they're going to have to be replaced, and that will be definitely a capital project.
Okay, thank you. So, and I know that we have that on the agenda, I think maybe the second meeting in May, but that'll be good to, to be able to kind of split that out and, and figure out where we're going with that. Does anybody have any other questions before we move on? No? Okay, I think we're ready.
Okay. So, Mr. Park, why don't you move on with revenue options?
Okay, so this is our last section. It should be, knock on wood, brief. I just wanted to point out some of the different revenue options that were discussed last year. There is some different ones. Just wanted to refresh everybody's memory as far as what is available to meet revenue shortfalls in the future and to, and to diversify our, our revenue options. The first there, as you remember, I discussed earlier, is the user fees. That study's been completed, and we'll be back in the fall to discuss your suggestions and possible approval of that at some point. The second, we've also talked about the environmental fee and/or the public safety fee. There was a recent Arizona Supreme Court ruling regarding the Phoenix case that involved airport charges.
Yeah, for shared rides.
For, for a shared ride share. There you go. We're still awaiting for the, the written opinion on that, and until we receive that, it should give us a little bit more guidance as far as what is considered a service and what's allowable for towns and cities, municipalities to charge. The one thing to remember about the environmental fee and the public safety fee, it is not ad valorem. It is not an ad valorem property tax. It's not based on the value of...
Um, it is not an ad valorem property tax, it's not based on the value of someone's property. Um, it was strictly, um, administered by parcel. Uh, public safety fee was going to be by, um, uh, household or business. Um, it's also important to note that we do have, uh, four years' experience, actually five years of experience collecting the fee, four years of charging it. Um, this current year, we have collected about 22,000, um, in past due fees and that, uh, effort continues, um, as we speak. The next option is a primary property tax. Um, that is an ad valorem property tax and is based on, uh, property value. That would have to be approved by voters, as we know, there have been, um, uh, proposals before, um, that were not approved by voters. Uh, it's still an option for the future. Uh, that fee or that tax would be, um, collected by Maricopa County Treasurer, uh, similar to our secondary property tax that we had used in the past to collect for, uh, debt revenue or debt payments. Next option, uh, is a franchise fee. These are charged to utility providers. It must also be approved by voters and that amount or that charge, um, obviously would get charged to the utility providers. They would most likely pass it along the, to the consumers, um, but we would receive those fees from, uh, the utility. And then, uh, last year, this option was, um, was used, an increase in the transaction privilege tax. We did raise it by three tenths of a percent. Uh, that became, uh, effective in November 1st. The current rate for most categories now is 2.9% across the town. There is a different rate for, uh, residential rental and that rate is 1.6. That, uh, specific category, um, or classification of TPT must be approved, uh, any, uh, increase in that must be approved by the voters. So that would have to be a ballot initiative as well, if we were looking to increase that. The only other fee that is, or not fee, the TPT rate that is different is the additional tax for hotels, uh, quote-unquote, the, the bed tax. That's currently 4%. And that does it for, uh, the revenue options as they are right now. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Uh, Mike, you have a question?
I do not.
Thanks a lot. Art?
I do not have any questions.
Thank you. Uh, Dennis, do you have any questions about this?
No questions, thank you.
Thanks. Alan?
No, just wish we had more money.
Sherry?
No, I do not. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks very much. Uh, Dave, do you have any questions?
No, Mayor.
Thanks. Um, so we're not talking about bonding in this case for any revenue. Um, I think there are certain parameters there and we really couldn't do it until November of, uh, '22. Is that the case also if we, uh, discuss the property tax?
Yes, in fact, I believe it has to be, um, in May of the even year, if I'm not mistaken. But we can look into that, um, to see if it's... Uh, Aaron, are you, are you familiar with that, um, property tax? Does it have to be in the even year?
Uh, I think that it does now have to be in even year, I believe, and I know that as to the other question, it has to be, it certainly has to be May.
Yes, and, and that's when we held it last, was in May.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Um, but again, we, uh, you know, we did talk about the, the lake liner and of course roads and, uh, and some sort of combination of, of things coming down the Pike, but in the meantime, I don't think I have any questions, uh, for tonight. Anything else that, uh, staff wants to add?
That was it for me.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience. Um, this is not the ideal way to have a meeting and, and, uh, I, I do apologize, but I think that despite the way it was held, I think you guys did a great job considering. Thank you.
Thanks, Grady. Thanks to everybody. I, I know that this was a, a, a big effort for all of you, getting all the information together and, uh, presenting it like this and, and I wanted to join what some of the others had said, that I had sent some questions also, so we really appreciate the fact that we were, uh, batting our questions away while you were preparing. So, um, if there's nothing else, we could take a motion to adjourn?
Almost. But no.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you all.
Good night.